At six thirty, I'm gonna call for Board of Almond regular meeting for Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. If everyone, could you roll call please, Tara?
Alderman Molly?
Here.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Wilkins? Alderman Deckard?
Here.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Magley?
No. If everyone can stand, I'll leave quickly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That moves us now down to item four tonight. We have comments from citizens. We have some folks here, I believe, that want to speak. I had... The only thing I had was from Mrs. Sanders on Singletary that I talked to or had an email from. So anyway, so I didn't have any. Do you have any other other people here?
I did not get any.
Okay, okay. So, at this time, we open up for comments from citizens.
Okay.
You come up to the microphone and state your name and your address for her for a minute if you would.
Okay. My name is Sandra E. Sanders. I live on five oh four West Singleton. And I wish to register a complaint about the continued nuisance of neighboring cats and feral cats in the community and our area in particular. We've also had raccoons and possums sighted. And Sandy from the code enforcement has helped to trap a couple of the coons, but we've been unsuccessful with the possums so far. But the cats continue, especially from where they are sighted, all the time across the street on Columbia Street, which is on the east side of my property. And the minute that they all pull out of the driveway, they head to my property and my neighbor Scott Stevenson, who's at five oh six West Singleton. And they leave their feces everywhere, which we step in it, mow in it. They continually spray my flowers out and back where it's killed. So they know I'm living, they spray it on the side of the house. And every chance that they get it, they come and sleep on the house. And they destroy my rug out the front door and I had to throw it away. And tracking them, they just call and say, yeah, they're missing and come and collect them. I could take them back home and turn loose.
So do you believe that there's an actual, like, home, like, there are residents or you identified a house maybe that somebody owns these cats? I'm just trying to clarify.
Yes. It's Scott and Sandra of Millington. And I'm not sure what their house number is, but we have sighted the... There's two gray ones. There was a black and white one, and once that was trapped, I haven't seen it for three or four weeks. But there are at least two and probably three gold-colored ones. They now have a whiper couch out in the front yard that the cats are seen sleeping all the time.
What are these animals you're talking about, the tail over there?
Yes, yes.
Would you say that, and what I'm hearing, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing straight. Would you say that most of the animals that you're having a problem with coming over when these people leave the house? And is that the biggest issue is some of their family-owned cat versus a law feral cat or not?
Possibly. I have seen a couple of other cats in the last few weeks on my way to the gym and then on Columbia Street, and I've also seen one on Singleton coming toward the east, toward downtown. I've seen a couple of younger cats. But I have seen other places, but this is the most problem. And they, they literally run all the time through the property. So, and as far as I know, I've never seen one of them in the house. So, but I don't sit and watch them play with them either.
What's it like in the wintertime? I mean, is this just started this year? Is it worse in the winter saying or?
This has continued since I moved there and I've lived there two and a half years now.
And it's been this way ever since you?
It's been worse this year.
It's getting worse?
Yeah. At one point, I counted seven cats. So I know there are at least four still and maybe five.
Have you ever seen any of the animals? Just, I'm looking visually on MapQuest. Are any of the animals close to, like, where the railroad crossing is? There looks like there's a grove of trees. Can you tell? Are they coming from out of that wooded area or are they just specifically coming from the?
They come from that house.
The house is the biggest, yeah.
Right.
On a regular basis, right?
Yes, yes. We have seen them catch a snake from down in there, but normally they come from that house and just come to our, our, and to business.
Gentlemen, if you'd like to see, I've got it pulled up.
Here's the treasure.
Here.
Yep, it's right here.
Their house.
And that house is right here.
Their house is there.
Right here and here. That's where they came from. That house is no longer there.
Trees around. I wasn't sure if they were coming from, like, a little grassy area or.
It would sound like to me, you kinda knew where they're coming from, the neighbors.
I might be quick enough to catch them on camera, but you know, as soon as I get my camera out there.
But they're being trapped and they're turned back to them?
Yes. Well, they've, they've called and said, you know, hey, you know, do you have my cat? However, they do it because pretty soon we'll see them right back over to their house. And I know it's the one that we've caught because I've taken pictures of them.
Well, I hate to be considered when it comes to these animals, but it costs us money every time we trap one of them because we have to have this and that done and feed them. I would say we don't, we wouldn't have repeat offenders as far as cats, as far as I'm concerned. But we need to make sure that once we catch one, then we've eliminated the issue of it being loose again to be at bay in the neighborhood, to me, okay? That's one of my thoughts and what I'm hearing here. Do you know if the cats are licensed?
No, I don't.
Well, if they are, if they're trapped and they're picked up, they would have to be licensed before they get released back.
Can we check to see if any of those cats are licensed? How many they have?
Sandy would go.
You only have four animals total, correct? Any ordinance?
Something like that. I mean, I'm wondering if Sandy doesn't need to go do, like, an investigative inquiry at the home that she's identified.
Because I know that house on the corner of Columbia Street, the garage is wide open and it's a mess. So I'm sure there's a bunch of cats that live in there too.
Oh, there's an abandoned house, is that what you said?
I don't know if it's an abandoned house.
Yes.
What number is it?
So it's right directly across on Columbia Street. It's on the corner of Singleton and Columbia, directly across from her house.
Okay.
The garage is wide open. There's stuff all the way up front.
I hope that we got it on our list, but maybe we don't have it.
So.
We have a list of homes that are abandoned that we're pursuing.
Wouldn't you say the last name is?
Millington. I believe that's correct.
Scott and Sandra.
So they're at one twelve South Columbia. And they have Alex, a gray cat, Duchess, a yellow and white cat.
I've driven by and seen three yellow ones laying on the sofa, which is... They're laying out front.
Those are the only two that are licensed.
Okay, so we shouldn't be giving back the other cats, right? I mean...
Well, unless they, you know, they can get up to, you know, four animals, they can add two more.
So my question is, do we charge them? I mean, for us having the animal and housing the animal to take it?
They should be charged a pound and fee.
So it's costing them a pound and fee and this and that?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I understood. That's why I asked that question. What I knew with the dog, I mean, the cats is a little... I think it'd be the same thing. If they're not licensed, they're not turned loose, are they?
Correct. You have to show proof of vaccination and ownership. So if they bring that into them and they purchase a license with the proof of the rabies vaccination, they can license and recover them at that time, but they have to show proof of the rabies vaccination and pay, you know, housing fees.
We have trapped two gray ones, but one on the back.
Yeah, the smaller one.
Smaller one's back. I'm sorry. No, you're fine. That one's getting all the, you know, that's right.
I guess another, besides the complaint, a recommendation would be, why can't we have a same law for other domestic animals as there is for the dogs, either a leash or in a pen, rather than running loose? If you own that and have it licensed.
Cats don't have to be on a leash.
Well, I understand that, but where that they're not free to feed to other people's property.
Did we find out any, anything, information for you in the city yet?
No. But, I mean, there, our dog and cat law does talk about dogs and cats, that they are supposed to keep them from damaging other, another person's lawn, flower, plant, garden or other property that if they, you have to, if they defecate on someone else's property, you're supposed to pick it up. So those things are in the law right now in our code, but there's no leash law for cats.
So that would mean I'd have to catch them every single time before I could see that it was enforced that they scooped it up and got rid of it?
I don't know exactly what the police officers would need as far as evidence.
Well, it's not a nuisance that you should have to continue on if it's the dog. A dog residence are coming from and by mine, right? That's what I think would aggravate me as a homeowner. If somebody perpetually had this going and I, you know, if I want to step in cat or dog crap, I want it to be my dog or my cats, not somebody else's. So, to be quite honest with you. So I choose not to have a dog, but I do have a cat. And if he uses the bathroom on the floor twice in our house, I'd use the litter box, which is inherently known to be able to do because it's in their nature that he won't live with us either. So, but I really like the cat. But, so I understand. The nuisance part of it, I think, is what's... If it's eventual and we know where it's coming from, I think we have a chance to control that, which usually a lot of things. You know, I mean, gotta be responsible for your animals, your kids and anything else that you feed and water. You know, so.
So this needs to be a referral to Sandy. And Sandy needs to just provide an investigation and a report back to the board. And I think Sandy will do that this time as a complaint, so, you know, Mayor Heather.
I can talk to her about it and say, what's been going on over here? What, what would you recommend? What would make your job easier to enforce? How do we enforce this? Because you gotta give them something that's enforceable. And so she'll be glad to give us, I think, her input and then give us an update. So I'll ask her for an update back to us at the next meeting, if that makes sense to everyone.
Yep.
And that way we can determine what we need to do. And we can see if there's anything out there with any other cities that, that might be already placed or, you know, us crafting our own thing, if somebody else has something, potentially use their, their code.
Well, two nights ago, when I got ready to leave the house and started to walk out to my car, then the dogs, who they do keep in or in their yard, you know, made a run and were going across the road and they caught them and they were growling and barking like they were coming after me. And I'm like, okay, so now this is gonna start too, so. But I have not had any communication, you know, tried to completely stay away from that because it's...
Unless you're directly probably involved at this point with the neighbors, you're better off your own. Then we don't have, you know, they have TV channel about that now. If you're in the obvious, it's crazy. But, so yeah, let's, let us do that. Does that sound reasonable? I think it makes sense for us to go to her. Sandy's very responsible what she does and does everything she can. She's, she's a great asset to our city, so I know she'll be more than glad to bring us up to speed and to help us any way she can with ideas or thoughts or her challenges on her side of being able to enforce the code. Or the code may need to be written, what, as we rewrite this forever of all.
How many dogs did you say?
There are three that I, that I know of. They're a breed of a collie or a shelter or something like that.
It's supposed to be a total of four dogs and cats combined.
Yep. So they're on the line with their, yeah.
Well, okay, I guess they, you said they had some cats lives.
Two, so they're one over already. The dogs are one over too, I guess. They're laying in the bed out front, the wicker bed or whatever you said it was. Have you seen them?
Well, I think somebody said that they had, had got, received a letter. Actually, I was friends with Sandy on Facebook and I guess she's unfriended me and...
Yeah, don't take that personal. I mean, I will just say on first investigation, they usually.
That's what I said. You know, I'm not responding. She put on there that she got a letter from the city and, you know, she told her that she had to get rid of the couch and she said it's wicker or so forth or whatever. And that, you know, she thought it was just the people that had new houses and first one knew and went ahead.
Well, when we've tracked.
That's not the issue. You know, I like cats. I like dogs. I've had cats and dogs both, you know, most of my life. I don't choose to have one right now. I don't want the responsibility of somebody else's.
Well, that's my first statement. I have a problem with that. We'll, we'll, we'll go forward and fill what that means and try and get to some of the reason. Would you like to?
Just, just a little bit.
Come up and tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm Scott Stevenson. I live next door to her, five oh six West Singleton.
How you doing?
There, uh, there one time, there was probably, many as ten cats. And your girl Sandy had caught several. Some of them never came back and some of them did. And this morning, I got my coffee and opened my curtain on my patio. And there was a cat about five feet from my patio. That was out there. I took my coffee and enjoyed my beer and something. And I mowed, I mowed the two yards and every time I mow, I run through three or four with my mower.
So these cats aren't even doing their natural instinct to somewhere to cover? I mean, it's just out on the open grass?
Just out in the yard.
That's unusual for a cat to do that. First place, but my point is it's...
It's being covered up.
Right.
Well, I mean, typically they look for saw soil or...
Not these.
Not these. That's what you're saying there.
They're south of New York. One of the back rooms in my house is my office and I chose it so I could see out in the pretty yard and everything. And I get to watch a cat go out there and cook every day, one time or another. And she's right, they're too fast to grab your phone and we saw how long it took me to turn it off and get a picture. But, and, and she was mentioning about the dogs. They had come at me too because my trash can is next to hers on that, on the street side of her house. And one of them got halfway across the street when he finally hollered and it was coming at him.
So both of you have been intimidated by these dogs at some point in the work tonight?
Yes. And I love dogs. I'm not a cat person. I think they're like a teenager. They don't listen. They don't do what they're supposed to. So I don't like, I don't like cats. They do whatever they want, whenever they want.
They got cats too, you know.
That is very much true. And I have a little beetle that we, we put a thing out in the yard and tie him up because we didn't want him running loose. And them cats knew how long his rope was and they'd get out there and tormented him. And he died last year of cancer. And he never had a peaceful moment outside because of, excuse me, damn cats that are ours. It's just, it's just ridiculous.
You know, I understood. I, I think that we understand that you guys are being inconvenienced by some neighboring animals. I think more so than feral cats, right? They're, they're more hunting and they're, you know, but...
Well, there's so many of them, we don't know.
Well, we'll, we'll figure that out as we travel. But we gotta figure out with Sandy, I think, what, what we do with them and what we can, can do or need to change and what we can, can't do.
Yeah, is this gonna be a situation where the Humane Society needs to be involved? You could be looking at animal cruelty or abuse claims and maybe it sounds like from what you're describing, maybe they're running, you know, I don't know, maybe there's a nuisance in the home. We, the city has dealt with a situation where we've had a cat hoarder, hoarder in our community before. That was a little of an, we, we, I, like I said, Sandy is really who needs to do an investigation.
She needs more traps because she stopped coming three weeks ago because she says she didn't have traps.
Well, she may not have a place to put them. Unfortunately, right now, I mean, you're in the middle of kitten season. Feral cats are breeding. Unfortunately, people don't spend near their animals, which, you know, people should do. So there's just not a lot of places to put them. And when they trap them, their only choice is to put them down. And then even finding a facility that will even hold them long enough so they can be put down is difficult. And then that also costs the city cost in order for the animal to be euthanized. So it's just kind of a catch twenty-two right now.
I don't, I don't want to kill. I just want them gone.
So what do we charge to get them out of jail?
So it, basically the cost, like when I was your municipal prosecutor, you have to pay the cost for the license. So whatever the actual city license is, if there was any charges that they, you know, that Sandy or anyone else provided to us, like in terms of housing the animal, feeding the animal, any medical associated with the animal that was turned over to the prosecutor, we would recover those costs. So those are the basic costs that would be recovered or typically are. But they absolutely have to, you know, have the rabies vaccination and their vaccination is up to date and they have to buy the city license.
But let's say they have a city license and it gets trapped and they, they come to get it. They want the cat to call. How much does that cost?
Twenty dollars a day.
Twenty bucks a day?
We ought to up that.
We ought to up it to where it hurts them bad enough that they think they're gonna keep the cats.
You have to be, you have to be mindful statutorily. The state veterinary department and the state department of agriculture set some of those fees. So we will have to see. I, I haven't checked on that, what that rate is, but they're the ones that helped establish that rate.
Can I make a suggestion there? I would say keep first time twenty dollars because, you know, animals do get out. My, my beetle shot between my legs and gone out that door more than once. But, but if, if, you go catch that cat again, you make it forty.
Shoot, do you shoot it to chase a cat or what?
I'm sorry?
Do you shoot through your legs to go chase one of these cats out of your yard? Because I almost gave him...
I can't.
I think I gave him a pass on that.
Since I broke my bulk of my feet, I can't run anymore. If you see me run, look behind me. Something is really after me.
Understood. But I can say a scenario where your dog shoots out and one of these cats that you're complaining about.
Oh, you're out in the door and they take off because they know.
Okay, got it. I, I get it. I just... What's your check on that one? Well, that's the first thing. I think what Sandy, get all that figured out and do an investigation and know what we have with the house over there, what they have, our licensed animals. How many do we think they have? How many times has she been over there in the last six months with, with problems with these animals? How many times has she traveled them? I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to the basic, basic summary of a bit of it and then the foundation of what's going on, the groundwork, and then we'll go from there. I think, I think from there, we'll be able to make some final decisions.
She's kept her two raccoons and I think three cats. Wouldn't that be right?
I think that's right.
And two of the three cats came back. The raccoon she took out to the tristigate. And then, and then we got a, we got a giant possum. If we ever catch that, that would be kind of awesome.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I mean.
Well, 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 we'll, we'll, we'll give Sandy, I'll give Sandy first. We have a discussion with her tomorrow morning. And we'll kind of go over and get this put together in our next council meeting. We'll have her bring an update to us. And we'll go from there and then.
When, when is the next council meeting?
It'll be the...
We'll have a committee on, yeah, on August eight.
August, August eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Any other comments from citizens? Okay. Well, with that, I'm gonna close comments from citizens. Thank you all for your input. Moves us to the best related.
Do you have your opinion on anything else I'm asking? I'm retired. You might. Madonna, you know who I am, so to talk.
Well, we will, we will. No harm, thank you. The mayor's role will be coming open here in the...
Thank you.
Please. Hey, so that moves us now to appointments, number five. There's two appointments on here. The one is a interim city administrator, Tara Strain. That would be just in the duties capacity is what we're, would be appointing her for. And then those duties, we discussed those as, as a group, as you remember last week. And that would be with the police department and the city public's work director would report to the mayor versus to that position of Tara in the interim of, and this is to allow us to be able to bring her up to speed as much as Pop before Heather leaves for her role and to take some of the load off of that role for you, Tara, in, in that situation. So we talked about that. Robert, I think you really want to recommend inviting those duties up. It made a lot of sense. I was getting input. We all agreed upon that. And then the other that got thought up, and tell me if I'm wrong at any time, as I'm talking about this, I've kind of given a recap of these two appointments, the interim deputy city clerk. We need to have a deputy city clerk because Tara's gonna have some vacation and some things like that going on. And maybe some times that we need to turn that in and take care of some extra duties. So it would be the duties of, in an interim basis until this gets settled out and we get city administrator hired to do all of the duties again is what, with these appointments would be. If I explained that well?
Yes.
So I would take, accept the motion for those appointments of, do I have to do them separately or can we do them as one?
Do them as one.
Yeah. So for those two appointments, A, interim city administrator, Tara Strain. B, being the interim deputy city clerk of Beth Cable. I make a motion. We appoint Tara Strain as the interim city administrator and Beth Cable as the interim deputy city clerk. Second about Terry. All in favor? All opposed. Okay. So it passes. Tara will assume duties as described and Beth as well. That moves us to the consent agenda, number six. A through H, Board of Almond meeting minutes, Public Works Utilities Committee meeting minutes, General Government Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, Land Zoning Minutes, Collectors Report, Treasurers Report, Activities Per Report and Financials Reports. If you have any questions about any of those or want to accept a motion, but if you, if you have anything to go out there, maybe if I can change you.
I think that we accept the minutes as listed.
I have a first, a second to accept the minutes as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. So those reports are accepted. That moves us to item seven. Accounts payable over $1,250. I take a motion on that based upon the other board provided.
Moving, we accept the accounts payable over $1,250 for a total of $414,715.06.
Okay. What is it, Caution Core, one header? The NU Life Labs Incorporated, Caution Core. What's that one?
Something that they purchased with the water department.
Does it have anything to do with that slaker or anything like that?
I don't think so, but I can ask them.
Well, even if it does, we, we owe for it. The point would be, or we, we need to find out, I guess, which is, we need to find out if that's associated with extra cost, right? And then we would want to keep a note of that. We still would need to pay the bill out of these. But we accept it with Heather to check to make sure that if it was something extra because of the inability for the system to run, that we would hold that back for future reimbursement. Does that make sense? Of course, you'll find that out. So I've got a motion to accept it.
Second.
I have a second. Now, Terry, all in favor of accepting the accounts payable over $1,250 for a total of $414,715.06? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. That moves us to the action agenda. First would be bill number two four six nine under Finance, Authorizing Depository Contracts, Central Bank. Anything, any questions about anything you want, you can say about it, Heather?
So I gave you all a copy of the bank bid comparison. And when it comes down to the bottom line and the interest that we'll receive versus the costs associated with the accounts, Central Bank came out over Home Bank. Total earnings from Central Bank over $16,000 a year, whereas the total earnings for Home Bank would be a little over $4,000 a year. So it made sense to us to stick with Central Bank.
Well, we take credit cards, right? When you pay bills and stuff up here. Do we charge the customers a?
Yes.
What is it, three percent on top of that if they pay by credit card?
Yes.
But if it's taken out of your bank account, I mean, nothing's charged on that, right?
If you do like an ACH, like you sign up for ACH where their bill comes out automatically at the same time every month, is that what you mean? But yeah, there's, there's no fee for that to the customer. So the reason I wanted to point that out is because the next three ordinances deal with depository accounts with Central Bank.
Based upon those requirements, that's the only way in that, so.
So we're staying with Central Bank. That's who we have now, right?
Yes.
And that's the report that she gave us to the comparison. I think somebody asked why that was decided to be printed out first. Why that decision makes sense.
Will the bill number two, four, six, nine be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, four, six, nine to be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Go ahead, read it there. Heather, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with Central Bank of Boone County.
Move that bill number two, four, six, nine be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a first and a second that bill number two, four, six, nine be given a second, uh, reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Second, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with Central Bank of Boone County.
Move that bill number two, four, six, nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have first and a second that, uh, bill number two, four, six, nine be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
I guess.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
No.
Okay, bill number two, four, six, nine passes. Ordinance number?
Three, one, three, four.
Thank you. That moves us to item B. Uh, this is just another part of the electronic services agreement. All this has been posted, if you would, thank you. That'd be bill number two, four, seven, zero.
Any discussion? Move that bill number two, four, seven, zero be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
I have first and a second that bill number two, four, seven, zero be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute an electronic business services agreement with Central Bank of Boone County.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, zero be given its second reading by title only?
Second.
I have first and a second that bill number two, four, seven, zero be given a second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute an electronic business services agreement with Central Bank of Boone County.
Move, move that bill number two, four, seven, zero be adopted by roll call vote?
Second.
I have first and a second that, uh, bill number two, four, seven, zero be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Bill number two, four, seven, zero passes. It would be, uh, ordinance number three, one, three, five? Thank you. That moves us to item C, authorizing city keeping agreement with Central Trust Bank, uh, which would be bill number two, four, seven, one.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, one be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
I have a first and a second that bill number two, four, seven, one be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a safekeeping agreement with the Central Trust Bank and authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore, and either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to establish, open, and maintain one or more safekeeping accounts for the city of Centralia, Missouri, AB Chance Memorial Fund and Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund with the Central Trust Bank, a Missouri trust company located in Jefferson City, to purchase government securities.
I move that bill number two, four, seven, one be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a first and a second that bill number two, four, seven, one be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a safekeeping agreement with the Central Trust Bank and authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore, uh, pro tempore, and either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri to establish, open, and maintain one or more safekeeping accounts for the city of Centralia, Missouri, AB Chance Memorial Fund and Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund with the Central Trust Bank, a Missouri trust company located in Jefferson City, to purchase government securities.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, one be adopted by roll call vote?
Second.
I have a first and a second that bill number two, four, seven, one be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call passes. Roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Bill number two, four, seven, one passes. Ordinance number three, one, three, six.
Gordon, can I ask a question on that? With, uh, Cable being, uh, the interim deputy city clerk, do we have to go through, re-sign all those documents? So our signature's not filed?
Yes, only if you will, yeah.
I have more just a question if we're gonna be doing that the next week.
Sure we will. That moves us to bill number two, four, seven, two, which is the, uh, the change order we talked about of moving out the dates for controls and things like that that Martin requested. Oh, no, 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 this is.
That wasn't the way I was getting there.
No, no, yeah, this is exactly right.
Correct, as mayor.
This is for the salaries of the interim.
Yeah, exactly.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, two be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, four, seven, two to be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. First reading, please.
An ordinance to set the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centralia, Missouri.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, two be given its second reading by title only?
Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, four, seven, two to be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Second reading, please.
An ordinance to set the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centralia, Missouri.
Move that bill number two, four, seven, two be adopted by roll call vote?
Second.
I have first and a second for bill number two, four, seven, two be adopted by that call vote. All in favor? All opposed? Passes. Uh, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Passes. Thank you. It'll be bill number two, four, seven, two, ordinance number three, one, three, seven. Now, that moves us to B, wastewater treatment, facility project, change order number four for part three of the seat bases. Base is gone. The bill number product, let's push that up. So, that's what we're talking about. I got ahead of, I missed it. I apologize. I do have a question. We're about saying that, uh, Fisher Group would be giving a ton of materials for replacing the liner. That, that's just for the, in that area of disturbed area? Yeah. Okay. So that would be related to small.
They laid down the liner, didn't they, when, when it was fairly smooth? That was, I remember that conversation. They would put down the liner when it was mostly done.
So he's, we've got this contractor doing this, and he's so far behind on the original job, and then we're adding this, and he's gonna jump on this.
We're putting this under him for Donaldson to do the bill.
So he's gonna allow that to happen?
Yes.
He's already signed it.
And he dropped the calls. He dropped the calls and all that, yeah. And it's just something we need to get done at this point. So we need to get that moving. Sooner the better on that's for us, to be under him. This, this is a good thing for us because they, you know, they were wanting money on top of.
You want seventy-two thousand?
Yeah, that, that's gone away. It's just the cost that we got paid by Donaldson.
And, and the money will be direct to the subcontractor, or is it going to the first contractor?
I mean, according to the contractor, or the contract, my understanding, and I would want clarification from Bartlett and West, but it has to go through Fisher to get paid out to Donaldson.
Can, can he assign it? Can you assign it?
Can you assign the amount? That's gonna be something I'm gonna go back to Bartlett and West before I answer. I know you're shaking your head. I just don't have a firm answer because generally you pay Fisher, that then pays out Donaldson.
There's some contractor, I would think they can assign it to a subcontractor. I think it has to go through them, and it has to be dispersed now.
Hasn't he not paid some of his other bills?
We're dealing with one. We've had one personally. We have one personally now, correct? Heather and Sydney. Just one for us, but there are. If you go on, if you go online, you can find some others.
Can you put both parties on the check when you're doing something like that?
I mean, here's, I mean, the nice of me, but I mean, Donaldson should have done its homework on Fisher. I, I know, I know. I mean, I'm not, but I mean, Donaldson should do its homework on Fisher. I mean, you have this out there that this money is going to them and directed to them. If they don't get paid, Donnie, unfortunately, they'll be in the, you know, they'll have to sue like some of these other folks, but, um.
The one that gets bigger, huh?
I'm sorry. We have, usually with these type of projects, it has to go through your general contractor to be paid out to your subs. I mean, that's just the way the state statute reads it. I don't know if we can put.
But it's something that's not gonna come back to bite us. As long as it's me.
Correct, correct.
You've Fisher, that team.
We paid, we've paid, and then under the, under the middle, they're irrelevant. It's their duty to pay their subcontractor.
Yeah, not to come across uncarrying, but it's not our problem at this point. We pay Fisher for this work and.
It, it could come back to bite us.
It's tough when you know the contractor and you're sitting there going, you know, so. But it's, like I said, it's good for us.
Because you won't get away from.
It's good for the city essentially.
Until he gets paid. If he doesn't get paid, he can still fight.
So we're gonna move along, uh, on this one. I'll entertain a motion.
So what's the fourth, the email you sent out today, Heather, for the four thousand dollars? What's that?
No, what I was saying is it's a four thousand dollars difference from the original one I sent you on Friday and then the one that you got today. That was, um, Donaldson had given some other quotes of work that they would do if, for some reason, Fisher wasn't able to complete it. And that was included in the first one, and so we went back and said, that's not supposed to be included in this because it's only in, if this, then that situation. So, so we got deducted. So it's only fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's what.
Move that we approve, approve change order number four?
Second.
The first and second, approve change order, uh, number four for wastewater treatment, silly project, uh, change order number four for part three, seat bases. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. That moves us to ten, permission, licensing.
Yes.
Okay. Purchasing, uh, the back truck proposal that we have, uh, under came motion, that's what we talked about. Uh, we have ones on smaller, kind of scale on trailers at this point. This one here does all the different things we talked about.
My first, I don't.
Yeah.
And, um, Aaron told me, I think it was on Friday, that, um, this company is delivering one to Monroe City, uh, very shortly. And so our guys are planning a trip to Monroe City to, to see how it operates, maybe get some training on it.
Move that we approve the purchase for the back truck. And was it total of one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents?
Yes.
Not.
Second.
Correct.
Right. We made more so without that. Second, I have a first and a second, uh, for the back truck, uh, proposal. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Any old business?
Um, our truck that we ordered, like, almost two years ago now is here. It's actually out front if you all wanted to look at it.
It's sewn, yeah.
It, it's different than what we ordered. Uh, they did not order a duly on the back, and it is a duly. So you see it, it's wider than what they had ordered, but still getting it for the same price. And if we were gonna wait, then they said it'd be at least another six months, and we've heard that story before. So we decided, um, the partners decided to just keep this one.
A better timing capacity, and it's a better truck.
It's a win. Yeah. Yeah, they felt like it was a win also. So, um, so they left it up here. They're gonna get the decals put on it. Um, hopefully with it, will this be some time. Richmond's will do that for us.
Who does their decals?
Richmond's.
So any other old business? Uh, new business? No new business in that business.
Where we at on our house list? When are we gonna do another Judge Judy, Judge Judy thing up here?
I'm just right here.
Uh, we have some that are ready to go. Uh, we're kind of, I'm feeling like we're having a mumble for a few minutes here.
We need to go before she leaves.
We will have.
I don't know what, forty-five days it'll be.
But we got the lid, we saw, we sent notices to some people.
It takes a while.
And we actually, I guess, need to check this house out. It's abandoned.
Yeah.
It's on the list. I can't believe we missed it, but in my best. Okay, well, we need to make sure.
How many do you have right now?
How many properties?
You don't wanna.
She'll tell us.
Somebody.
She'll look it up.
What issue are you taking? Where are you all talking about?
We bring the homeowners in and.
We do, we do a county straight hearing.
You have a neutral hearing judge and a court reporter, and I present evidence, and they can have an attorney, and they present evidence. I mean, it's just like a mini trial, and you all act as the jury, meaning the board sits, listens to the evidence, even make a decision, is it a nuisance, is it not, and then give direction as to what sort of remedy, whether it's tearing it down or something else that you wanna see.
Percent effective.
There were a lot of people, as we did the first time, there were a lot of people that we would tell them, you're next, and then all of a sudden these lots are getting sold and everything else. I really encourage people to start building.
There is a house over, it's across from the electric.
Yeah, it's on a corner, it's not a fire.
Hidden behind.
Oh, yeah. That's on our list.
It's on the list. The chief, the board's obligated, it's, right, right, same.
And we come up with anything about people living in campers around town?
I thought you said we could do that, or did you?
You can't live in them. Um, the code's just very vague. But, so if you look at the definition, so if you go back to the definition in the zoning chapter, it says that a dwelling is not a motorhome. Like, it specifically says that that is the camper, that is not a dwelling. So whenever it talks about dwellings and what you can live in, it does, it says that you cannot. If that's the way, that's the way I interpret it.
So you just.
But I don't know what the repercussions are.
Do we have any other cities that have maybe something on the books that's a little more that, if this and that, then this constitutes that you're living in, uh, a camper, this would dictate that you can't, but these things would. I'm just saying, I mean, because I mean, we get a lot of complaints. I do. I get a lot of complaints about this stuff.
There's a couple that people are living in, and there's at least one that, probably, that's a pretty rough condition, right by the Christian church. Yes. Yeah. I mean, there's, I mean, they got, they look like trash bags shoved into spots to keep water from coming in or something like that.
They've gotten ticketed before about that, you know, a lot of time.
These guys are dealing with some people coming out of the trailer, crossing the greens and carrying all.
Is it Britain? Technically. Rawlins and Britain.
Barnes and Rawlins.
Oh, Barnes.
There's one on Allen Street that's in the half of the, sticking in the garage half of the van. They got it parked out too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's one thing to have them parked out there, it's another thing to live in.
You usually can live in them for short periods, like if your home's being constructed for a temporary, your house is burned down.
Or somebody, somebody's spending a week or two visiting, you know, grandparents pulled in with their camper. I mean, that stuff, uh, you would expect to be.
Yeah, you'd get.
Do you guys, do you guys have any issue with pods? You know, those portable containers that people live in? Do you guys have any issues with those?
We have no like storage units?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you guys do have some people living in pods?
Living in them?
Simon Wester lives in LL many storage every day.
Oh, God.
Well, I, I have access to the ordinance, so I'm ready for pods, but I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
That's why you do not put electricity in storage sheds, because they'll put their heaters in there and the next thing you know, they burn them up.
Well, and they sue you if somebody dies because the thing burns down and they're illegally living in there. You end up on, on your insurance as well.
Say they're living in storage or you're down there for the bathroom, shower, or not.
I'll move to mayor stuff. Um, just, I had a discussion, you know, I have an email from, uh, Heather provided. Um, I had probably a, a half our discussion here, uh, part of the last, a pre-direct discussion about where things are at, what's going on, what's going on this side, and what's going on this side, and, uh, where I feel that, that we could have done better, being our project management and some things like that, and set an agree upon expectation moving forward that, that he would, um, me and our project management, and some things like that, and set an agreed-upon expectation moving forward, that, that he would, um, be completely on deck and be the point guard for moving forward with getting the Fisher side of the, the bases done, and whatever that takes to do that, and then to help us see through the slacker issues on the, um, he has not been in, in, in a situation where there was litigation before, I think was really confused of who had been named, right? And so, I explained to him that it didn't matter, that they're gonna always get named, because they're, they're the basis of design and specifications, so, you know, that doesn't mean they won't, doesn't mean they don't get released from it at some point, you know, but explained to him that the city gets named sometimes, and there are other folks as well, and it ends up not being the city, but someone individual, but, so, had that discussion, I think it was a good discussion, to be quite honest with you. I think he, he understands the need of what they need to do to help us at this point to get to the finish line, and we'll see if that all serves, so...
Is Fisher working now?
Well, there's a bunch of people out there, but they just keep running the D four, uh, up and down the burbs, out there, from, uh, that's all they've been really doing.
So they haven't excavated all that, you know, with the larger...
Oh, no, no, not in the large basin, not any closer to today than when we talked about it, back when they said we were jumping, trying to knock that out, and we were figuring what we're gonna do with the lower basin.
So on the bond issue, the bonding issue, will pick a company to come in and finish it, correct? Or do we do that?
So the bonding company just, I mean, it depends, they have a choice, right? And since this is in litigation, it'll largely be directed by whatever is agreed to amongst the litigants, and how that's gonna happen, they could pay us out of the amount, and then we have to select a contractor to conclude it. They can come and find somebody to fill it in, I mean, it's literally unfortunate, I mean, it just depends, I can't answer that right now, it'll be decided in litigation, they have, you know, at least four or five options that I can think of that they could choose, that could be agreed upon. And the city will have input on that, too, so I mean...
I mean, we, we gotta get to a point...
We gotta get a racer, we don't have a racer.
Right, right.
That's where we're not...
Before they step in, they, that'll be the last resort.
He's not bankrupt.
Well, we haven't been able to, here's the bottom line, you can't, the bottom line is, you can't, you can anticipate potentially what you gotta do, but you can't do something when you're, you're on a contract until you can execute the failure, or, or the lack of in a contract, right? So, we aren't there yet, the twentieth is the date, it's where the substantial...
That's where we pull the trigger, right?
Should be done, and then it's five hundred dollars a day at that point. Um, we are gonna have a meeting to see, you know, me and Mike and Heather and Matt are gonna have a meeting with the DNR representative, uh, that's over our project, and bring him up to speed, it's, it's, it's a guy, bring him up to speed of what's going on behind the scenes here. Because I'm sure nobody's showing up and telling him, well, we, there are potential failures here, and what we were supposed to execute, or, you know, I'm not sure that there's been real clear communication of where we're at with a couple of these things. And I think that it's critical that the DNR understands what that is, based upon where we're at today, so that they're not, they have their eyes wide open moving forward, what we're dealing with at the city. And, uh, we're gonna have that discussion some of this week, based upon you being there as well, um, in that discussion, a little bit of time to do that, I had to talk to you about that, but I, and your, your thoughts on that, I think it makes sense for us to, to make sure that the DNR understands the city of Centraya is more than willing and wanting, and has been, more than cooperative, been trying to get this project done, but there are some real underlying issues at this point, that are gonna come to some point and have to be remedied, potentially, without question. So, um, I think it would be good for the people, a person handling our file with the government is up to speed on what that looks like, and doesn't get handled at some point.
Have they made a demand for any more money in the last week or two? They've been pretty silent.
And then they agreed to this, put, put Donaldson on the, on the book side, the Donaldson side. Everybody seen the letter that they got, the email response that you forwarded, uh, for Valentine, uh, which is lunacy, if you look at it, but, um, it's what it is.
Oh, I'm gonna show you the new pictures we got today, you all wanna see those?
Yeah.
The slacker?
Mm-hmm.
They, they sent the gentleman that they told us in this meeting we had for four hours, they sent the gentleman, they had a gentleman they sent originally, because they didn't have anybody else.
Are they gonna think it's happy, or are they gonna give it on a bad note?
Just want you to see what I saw.
This is what we came into this morning, I've got a control of the lights. Yeah, we... So what you're gonna see here is what we got this morning, Martin's handling, um, all of the slacker issues, we're not being involved in them, and if that gets clear enough, you'll be able to see if there's lime.
The slacker, this is, the slacker's behind this wall, you can see these, this shoe right there, that's dripping with wet lime. And then, so typically, whenever we've been out there, this portion right here, that kind of just excess goes into that wheelbarrow. And anyway, so, I'll show you what happened. This piece had popped completely off and caused all of this, all of the...
The floor, and there was a bunch of residue on the floor of the, of the lime.
Yeah, this is what they came into today.
And to put it in perspective, when I was talking to Mike about it, that wheelbarrow...
It's a full bore.
And with the old system, would take weeks or months to even have a small amount in the bottom of it.
Right.
So that much stuff is a significant issue, it's...
Right, so, so, in, in the sake of, of where we're at, is with this situation right now, just wanna give you this more of your information, just to bring you up to speed of something else that we're documenting to, of, of, of things that have been being tried to remedy the problem.
This wall is what you saw in the first picture, the back of that wall, so this leads into the water plant, this is the door to the water plant itself. So you can see how that is, um, seeping over into the water plant, they're testing it.
Probably they're test, yeah, testing it in your kitchen, area.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Did it throw any alarms, when that thing blew off?
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm not sure, we don't find that, I don't know.
Oh, also, Matthew said that the, um, calcium chloride is what they mix with the cinders for, um, for salted rose. So it's not even for the water.
And they probably had to order that to replenish, just a little...
Yeah, we have to, we're, whenever they say it's available, we have to order it, yeah, so they're getting ready for the tour.
Yeah, so anyway, just, just to bring you up to speed.
So there you go, now you got to see what I saw.
How much has all that waste of lime cost us over the last...
We don't know, we're figuring on it, I mean, we're figuring, we're, we're keeping up and doing it as best we can, and this is... Too much. So anyway, uh, that's all I've got, city minister, I'm reporting back it, so, we'll get Heather.
Uh, my report's in the packet, we had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions about different projects on the town, try to keep you all up to date if possible, especially with the renovations going on at the high schools, storm shelter requirements. Uh, I did submit a letter, um, last week or the week before, saying that we would make certain exceptions, but not completely make an exception for the storm shelter, um, just, we would not completely waive the storm shelter requirement, we would do the same thing that they did in Sturgeon recently, which would allow them to make the storm shelter for the new addition to, um, house the occupants created by that addition. That's the exception that we were willing to make, because that's the same one that they, they made in Sturgeon. Um, there were some, there's been quite a bit of discussion about that, but, but that's been, that, the recommendation's been set. It's a big liability for the city.
Still got to do the firewalls, and...
Yes, still with the firewalls. It's just a big liability for the city to say that we'll waive that requirement, even though the, maybe we haven't had a tornado through here, and we've been very fortunate, but what if we do, and the national data shows that this is a red area, that, you know, there's a potential for those kind of storms? It just really puts the city in a bad situation.
We never share storms that are potentially dead with high winds and tornadoes.
And statistically speaking, if it hasn't happened here, our odds are going up.
Yes.
And the statistics are...
I, I don't, I don't want, in all my conscience, that anything that I've done, or driven a car, or anything, killed a person, so, especially a child or, or youth, and those, those have been put in place for the reasons I explained to, to, to Steve Chancellor, and quite especially when I was on vacation with him. Uh, so, uh, this is as good as it gets for them, and we're being very considerate at this point, and still being considerate of, of why those requirements by the International Building Bill Change.
And then, we did submit the ARPA applications, uh, sent that notification to all last week, but, so we're looking at, um, asking for about two point three million, well, our total products are two point three million. The water meter project is, so we approved four hundred and ten thousand, so what we approved was for residential meters only, we didn't approve for the big meter, bigger meters. Um, this, uh, if we get this ARPA funding, it would include replacing all of those larger meters, everything over a three-quarter inch, and maybe one inch, maybe we went up to a one-inch.
One-inch or maybe...
Um, it would include replacing all of those, and it would include, um, having someone come in to do the replacement, like we did for the electric meters, hiring a company to do that. So the engineers, um, that showed up on our report, we thought it was a great idea, I mean, we can ask for up to five million dollars per project, um, so I don't feel like we're being greedy on any project that we're asking, uh, from funding for.
And when we went over, Cochran was very thorough, very impressive, how thoroughly, where they called an engineer, and talked about the lift station, and he went down through the list of what they quoted, and what would be included, and why, you know, it was the same ass, and, uh, very robust, all the way down to the seat of the ground, everything, everything. So it's good to see, they, what they, what they quoted, and, you know, so, so it was, it was a good encounter, to talk through that, and give it to the base that submitted, so, you know. I was impressed, and what you...
I was very impressed, um, we, we got on the phone with Cochran, and, and Chris was in the office, and they went down, we went through line by line, to make sure that everything was filmed incorrectly, we discussed all of it, we found a few errors that needed to be changed, and then, um, I just asked Sydney that, um, they'll make their decisions in October, so by October, you know, all of these projects get pushed through.
She's a big one for us, where we just want to...
And we have budgeted four hundred thousand for sewer main lining by itself, our twenty-one percent match is two hundred and eighty-one thousand for the sewer main lining and the, um, lift station. So, if, if this comes about, then we have that extra money in, um, in the sewer budget.
Uh, one question, I wonder if we have the file for the public use tax, if we're going to have that out in November or October?
I believe it's in August, it's the next month. So, um, I've already been working on the ordinance, um, and I have a neat little graphic, you guys want to see that sometime, a little presentation, but, um, and I'd be willing to share it with anybody that's gonna talk at Rotary, or Kiwanis, or...
You can do that.
When you, you gonna have all that completed before you get your departure?
It's already done.
Oh, it's already done.
It's already done. Yep. That's long enough.
All right, that moves us to our city attorney, uh, Sydney.
No, it sounds like I have to have the pods, it's the only community I'm living in, I need your last name, but I mean, there are other communities in Boone County that are facing this issue right now, so it ties right in with your R one zoning and your zoning restrictions, it sounds like it might just be something you need to add to the books, so all of these can use some options and present it for you guys to consider next month as we move forward.
Hey, I have a question about that, since this, people are, they're actually renting these storage units, so...
No, the, the, the ones that we're seeing in the communities, the bigger ones, that like, I would call them, they come in the back of like a, a, either a railroad boxcar, or a truck boxcar.
They sit on the ground.
Twenty-foot container.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of like, you can generally get trapped, but this is the closed container.
They make houses out of them, you can actually buy it.
But you, but you can move, like, if you're moving, they'll send you a pod, you can take and score your stuff, and then they'll come and take the pod, very small. Very small, and it's bigger. But it's all mine, so it's, it's the same concept, but...
But it sounds like they have people living in a storage unit, too, which is even...
Um, our shitty clerk, anything?
Two things, um, I sent you guys an email today, talking about MML, this is September, there's not a virtual option this time around, um, and it seems like people are signing up really quickly, so the room's already kind of limited. So if you decide you wanna go, it's December, I'm sorry, September eleventh to the fourteenth, and it's at Marguerite Mill, and it's like a few hours. I know, that's where I started my summer term, it was just last weekend. So if they could just let me know, and your air conditioning sucked, awful, I'll get it, I'll get you ready. It's usually a very good training.
I actually think I have a case, and we've come ready. Well, that would actually be if you've been doing a certified municipal collective official thing, like, at that one, I don't know.
Yeah, at least for a nice little flash, congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely, um, good.
And then, the other thing is the change in polling place that took place, um, we no longer have the, um, at the Church of the Polling Place, it's the East Annex, over on Spitzer. That's for everyone, everyone will go there to, to vote.
Okay.
Yes, Boston, the entire town's in charge.
A long way.
We've only had one polling place, um, typically in a presidential election, is usually when we only have two, only have two polling places.
I have the same one, ten years, I'm with you.
We go to the Annex.
All right, then that moves us to as may arise, any as may arise, I'll talk about everything, thank you, so...
I just thought, what have, where are we at on the trailer at the trailer court that's been condemned for years? That they say are supposed to be out of here this year, and it's still sitting there?
We'll probably need to follow up on it.
And their back lot hasn't been mowed all year, next to the cities?
I do know that Sandy's been sending notices to them, so we'll see where, where we're at with that.
I, I, I say, this is what I would say about it, I think it's time that Chetease owns it.
You just come in.
Have to come in here from Houston, and give him a little pay, and let him come up here, and he can sell the property if he's not gonna keep it up, or he can get it up to where it needs to be, because we fooled with him the whole time I've been a mayor, he's been very involved, he's been...
They've already changed manager.
They've managed four times, at, at least, and...
I think that's part of the problem, is that they, the payments are in there, and they're gonna do this.
But when they tell us that, he doesn't give them the money to do anything.
I know.
So then they leave, and, and so, if he's not gonna make a commitment to his property being at the level it needs to be, then we need to force him to do something with the property. It's really where we're at, so the, the, the trailer is just the final straw for me to go ahead and, and make it hard for him. We've tried more than, way above, trying to work with them, we've met them out there, we've talked, we've walked the plate two or three times, we, we provide them people to do the work for them, tree trimming, and, and bowing, and all kinds of stuff.
Well, they did the tree trimming.
And they did it, but then he cut that off, he cut the money off, so, so the bottom line is, if you're gonna own something, uh, you gotta keep it up, and he's not doing it. So for him to have to come in from Houston, uh, we'll see how he likes that trip, because those, those tickets have gone way up, even if you fly Southwest.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good.
So he'd be one of them on the list, and he's gonna be hard to address right up here.
All right.
What happens if he doesn't show up?
It's a default, essentially, we'll present evidence that shows that there could be a nuisance.
Call them, at that point.
Well, then, of course, you don't need to give him notice, and he can appeal it to the circuit court, I mean, once you start to take action, because, you know, there's those people, too.
Yeah, but if that's the case, you're gonna have to do that anyway with him, so you might as well get on down the road, might take two years, but let's go get it all.
End up in court, right.
I'll get it all, that's a, that's a piece of property that is next to a really nice development, and one time, regardless if it was a whole, a whole park, it was kept, needed as a pit for years when we grew up, if you... And I understand how those lots empty, they're not driving.
He's never been up here, he's been off of the line, he's never been up here.
So I don't know.
Anybody got anything?
Trailer court out there by Kentucky State and all that.
Drop the, you know, your letter?
I'll make a motion, we adjourned.
The first and second, we adjourn on a favor.
All right.
Words, passes, we're all adjourned. Thank you, everybody.